I think we can all agree, whether you live on the waterfront or you don't, whether you want the water in the lake or you don't. I think we all can agree that we love Grandberry. Hey, Lacy's got water. Have you ever thought recently that, like this gentleman here, something's kind of backwards? I would like to give the word I really, really like to choose out here, I'll call it a month. I think that's a really good reason, a good word to use. Here's the deal. There's something wrong with the lake out here. And the BRA claims they've never called this lake constant level. Oh, sorry, use those bad words, "constant level." And, you know, we've heard this word "constant level" for a long time. The BRA claims we've never used the word, we've never claimed this lake to be constant level. What have they claimed this level to be? What is this lake? This is local myths and rumors off the BRA's website. One of the questions that was asked on this website, BRA's website, now, BRA, anybody from the BRA, okay, anybody here, they're not going to admit it, I know who you are. This enlarges the question word by word. Now, they're looking on their website right now, what has he got here? What's he got here? Hmm, this is from the BRA's website 10 years ago or so. It reads, very innocent question, why does Possum Kingdom Lake have to release water for people to canoe down the river? Very innocent question. But the answer reveals itself. Possum Kingdom Lake was built to produce hydro power, which requires releasing water from the lake through the turbid into the river. Morris Shepherd Hydro Power Electric Plant, of course, is what they're talking about. It's funny that the BRA claims, the same claim they have the Lake Grandberry, that they claim that Lake Grandberry was produced for power, producing power, the same for Possum Kingdom, and they shut the hydro plant down, clean plant, they shut it completely down. Going on down where the other, right here, says, "Since the Morris Shepherd Dam Hydro Power Electric Generation Facility is called into service frequently in the summertime, water is released frequently." When's the last time you seen water released frequently into Lake Grandberry during the summertime? Water released into the river goes directly into Lake Grandberry, making it appear to be constant level, since it receives this continuing flow of water. What's it appear as a constant level? Constant level? Okay, so this is directly off the BRA's website, and I'm sure they're going to go hunting for it, you know, and make sure it does disappear. They do say, "However, water is not released solely to replenish the level of Lake Grandberry or to allow canoes to have water in the river." Of course not, it's also for the Comanche Peak and the release downstream. That's normal. That's normal. So the question is, is what is constant level? Really, what is it? Now, I'd like to show you something that I think will reveal what constant level is. What I think we should look at, go through, forget all the emotions, let's get down to what it really is, and I think this will help. This is courtesy of the BRA, and I do think Judy Pierce and the BRA people can do that, thank you very much. This is the historic levels from 1969 when Lake Grandberry was impounded, 2013. And at the top up here, and I'd like to probably, I'll do mine, I know everybody can't see you here, but where I have my pointer, where the dark blue lines are, that's basically the level of the lake, which is 692.5, where this is just the full level of the lake. And then you can see the dropage, this is 1969, way over here is 2013 where we currently are. This first level here is two and a half feet low, all the way across there. The next level is another two feet, which is four and a half feet long, excuse me. So here we have, from 1969 to 2007, I don't care what happens after 2007, and I'll talk about that in a minute, we have levels that are between full and two and a half feet low. Relative constant level, RCL, equals two and a half feet or better. Let me ask you, if the water was down two feet right now, who would be disappointed in that? It might be. It might be. Now, we have four times, they're going to bring up the point, we have four times here or drop below two and a half feet. Listen, in the first 38 years of the impoundment of Lake Grandberry until 2007, 456 months, Lake Grandberry has been down below two and a half feet only 15 months. Count up these four spots. Now, I've talked to some of the old tigers on the lake, and they claim, maybe somebody can clarify this, but they claim the area like this was taken down so they could work on a bridge. I'm not sure, am I sure if that's true or not? But it was a very, very short time, and then it kicked right back up again. And then there's another spot right in here. The point is, is this, the relative constant level, let's define it, or the constant level, if you want to define it a little clearer, is two and a half feet or better. We can live with that. We've lived with it for 38 years. Then, we get to 2007, right here, where the red line is. Now, I'm going to go over here because elected officials are over here. Right here. 2007, they shut down the hydro electric plant at Morris Shepherd. It was shut down very quietly. Matter of fact, in 2007, the BRA, they were never questioned about the shutting down. They said it's under maintenance, which is understandable, because it is a 50, 50, 60-year-old plant. They shut it down right here, and it went quiet for a couple of years, and then you can actually see the results from 2007 to last year, and then to this year, right here. And you can actually see the drop there. But I want to show you something interesting. They're talking about comparing us to Possum Kingdom. They're saying that, well, Possum Kingdom needs its water. And I know there's a few people from Possum Kingdom. You know, guys, your fires, everything else, our prayers are really with you, and we want to work on this together. But Possum Kingdom, I want to show you a couple of spots in Possum Kingdom. Now, what I have here is I actually have the same exact levels for Possum Kingdom, but it was impounded in 1947. So right over here is 1947, here's 2013, and right in here is about '71, okay, is about where Grandberry came in, was in 1970, which is actually, let me go about right in here. So it was impounded, actually, '70 to 2013, so Grandberry started its first year right here. What I did, I remember, I've been on Grandberry for a little while, and I have history here, but I remember a few years ago, not very long ago, there's a, like, a long period where Possum Kingdom was down for a long period of time, and that was 1989 and 1991. You can actually see three years right here, these are five-foot increments down, down to 15 stays between 12 and 15. So those four guys are up there, 15 feet lower, 12 feet low for three years. Listen, we're in a drought, sure we are, they were in a drought back then. BRA is like, we've never had a drought before. We've had droughts before, and we pray for rain, we do all the things we need to do. But I want you to look at this, for three years, they were down 15 feet. Now, let's go back, and right in here, this is '89, right here, '90, '91, right here. Look at Grandberry. Two and a half feet down at the most, there were some times it was back full again. The hydro electric plant was generating power, and we were getting water from, obviously, from Possum Kingdom, and for three years, we didn't get down below, much below two and a half feet. And here we are now. And here we were last year. Here we are now. Front page, front page this morning, we're going to be eight feet low by June, if we don't get any rain, which would be a new record. Is this a record drought? It's not a, it's a drought. It's not a record drought. What's going on is, they shut the hydro electric plant down, and now, they have decided, BRA has decided, that if they're going to release water, it's not going to be to the degree or to what it was before the hydro electric power was actually generating, which is right in here. So I think everybody can actually understand that. Here's the deal, and the challenge that we have, we've got two challenges here, and I'm asking the elected officials right now, this is the challenge. First challenge, we want our water back. What I mean by that is, for 38 years, we had water coming in from the hydro plant, released from PK, and in 2007, they shut it down, and according to the BRA, we are not going to get the same amount of water back. They will say, we will get some water, it's just not the same. You can ask them until you go in the basin, they're going to say, no, you're not going to get the same amount of water. We want it back. We want to reclaim our RCL, our relative constant level of two and a half feet or better. That's the first challenge. We want to get that back. We're not asking for more water, we're asking for the water that we once had before the hydro plant was closed. The second challenge here, we're going to refer back to challenge one. Okay, thank you, thank you. I've got one more slide here, coming. We're going to refer back to challenge one. What I, let me expand on that just a little bit. The BRA, on top of all this, most of you already know, they're asking for more water to sell out of the Brazos River Basin. How much water? A lot. I calculated today, they're asking for three times the amount of water the size of Grandberry. Is that a lot of water? To be able to sell. And right now, when Ken Ramirez, the attorney, comes on, he's going to talk about the permitting process that's going on right now down in the state. We've got about a year to be able to take care of the situation and to let them know the state that, you know, how we feel about it. We want to refer back to challenge one, and that is this. Until the BRA shows to be good managerial stewards of Lake Grandberry and are accountable for their actions, they should not be awarded one more drop of water. We were in meetings with Ken Ramirez today, and trying to get some more information, more news here, and he's going to come up here in a minute and talk about that. And I appreciate all of you coming. This is a very important issue. It's not only localized, it's also statewide. Not only are we in a drought, but they're trying to do some water bills down there on the state levels. All this comes into play. Our elected officials who are sitting over here are watching and asking us, well, what do you, what do you want us to do, or how can we respond? And as we get toward the end of the presentation here, we'll give you a little bit of idea of actually what can actually be done at this point. But our first guest speaker today, he is a water rights attorney. He has represented the city of Boston against the Low Colorado River Authority. He is the current water rights attorney for the city of Grandberry. His name is Ken Ramirez.
How about that? Thank you, everybody. And thanks a lot, Joe, for inviting me, thanks y'all for inviting me, and I want to thank the city of Grandberry, the council members, and Wayne McKethan for allowing me to speak this evening. And just to be clear about that, I do represent the city of Grandberry, and I'm working with Wayne and his council to try to get something done here. So I'm going to be the boring part of the evening, because I really just want to present you with information about the regulatory process, and perhaps how all of this fits into the regulatory process, or if that fits in to what's going on here. I can tell you for sure that the city of Grandberry, the council members and the city manager are fully committed to improving the conditions of Lake Grandberry. That's why they hired me, that's why they asked me to come up here this evening, and so I just want to be clear about that part. So let me try to put this into regulatory context in terms of what's going on in Austin at the permitting level. There's also, of course, additional things going on at the legislature, as we know. I'm not going to speak to that, I'm not a lobbyist, but I'm aware of various things going on there as well. This all started, or at least the regulatory process for this all started in 2004. And that's when the Brazos River Authority applied to the TCEQ for a new, or an amendment of their water permit. The permit that they need from the TCEQ to move water, operate water, in this basin, particularly in the reservoirs, all up and down the basin, a massive permit application, what they call system operations, or SISOPS, permit application. So that was in 2004. That went through seven years of processing at the TCEQ, and then in an extensive contested case hearing, where a number of parties were opposing the permit application. Specifically, those parties are Dow Chemical, who has a large plant in a very senior, which means very good water right at the very bottom of this basin, and friends of the Brazos River, were opposing the permit application at the hearing. The long story short, and by the way, the BRA is seeking about 400,000 acre-feet of water more than they have. Now, they want a lot more things in that permit application, and in their defense, a lot of the things that they want to do in that permit are good things, because it would improve the efficiency of water operations at the basin. But they also want hundreds of thousands of acre-feet of additional water. That would probably be all the remaining water that would be left to be permitted in this basin, so it's kind of like the rest of the water that's left in the basin the BRA is seeking in this permit. After seven years of processing, the matter was heard by administrative law judge, actually two administrative law judges, that will tell you how complicated this is. And they determined, after their hearings, which were pretty much like a full-blown trial, they determined, or recommended to the TCEQ commissioners, the three commissioners in Austin, that either the permit be denied, which is very dramatic, it's very unusual for permits like this to be denied, or that the BRA be required to put together what's known as a water management plan. The fundamental problem that the administrative law judges had with the permit application is it did not have enough specific detail about where the BRA would divert water, or allow others to divert water, at what water rates that allowed them to divert it, and the impact that all of that would have on lake levels, water right holders, et cetera. And when the matter got in front of the three commissioners, which I understand many of you were there that day, I think it was in December of 2011, they decided to not issue the permit, to put the hearing on hold, and to make the BRA come up with this water management plan. Once again, simply put, that's just putting more detail into the management plan that they have for the basin. And gave the BRA until the end of November of 2012 to do that, which the BRA did. They submitted their water management plan in November of 2012, just a few months ago. And the TCEQ staff, by the commissioner's order, has seven months in which to do a technical review of that permit application, to determine whether the application is adequate to be granted, is not adequate and should be denied, or is someplace in the middle. So that's what's going on right now. Just to complete the process, then, sometime, I guess around the 1st of July, the TCEQ staff will release their, I guess you'd say, recommendation on the permit. Like I said, whether it should be denied, granted fully, or somehow modified. And then it's going to go back into the public participation process, a public comment process, which will be both spoken and written, public comments to the TCEQ, they're the permitting authority, and then into, back into the contested case hearing, where parties who want to participate and can show that they have a valid reason to participate, as I believe the city of Grandberry would, for example, will go back in and potentially challenge that permit. What does all this have to do with your lake levels? It has a lot to do with it. There's nothing in the permit application or the water management plan that directly says the BRA is going to have to release more water to Lake Grandberry. That specific detail is not in there. The cold hard fact is that the BRA owns this lake, and most of the water in it is their water. But the BRA made the decision, this is my view, made the decision, as Joe just finished explaining to us, to not release as much water to Lake Grandberry. It's tied to the decision to close the hydro plant, I understand that. But if the BRA made that decision to not release as much water to this lake out here, and the BRA can make the decision the other way around too. It is in their hands to do that, that much I do know. Because I represent the city of Grandberry, and I need technical help to work on this, these are very complicated technical hydrological engineering, environmental issues. That's why it takes the TCEQ seven months to review an application. I have hired a PhD hydrologist to help me, a gentleman named Andre Salazar, or I should say, the city of Grandberry authorized me to hire him. He is an expert at all of these kinds of issues. He got his PhD at Texas A&amp;M, from the man who's really responsible for water availability modeling in Texas, and all this, by the way, is based on computer modeling. He has written a report to me that is now under the attorney-client privilege, I, of course, have shared that with my client. So I'm not going to talk about the details of what that report says, but I will tell you that that report does point out flaws in the BRA's water management plan and water rights program. There are issues there that the BRA needs to answer for, and the BRA needs to be able to prove its case in front of the TCEQ, in front of the administrative law judges that will take this back up again. In terms of public input and your opportunity to participate and affect it, the opportunity is wide open at this moment in time. This is the time for anybody who wants to have an influence over the process to act. If this were a baseball game, I'm a baseball fan, it would be in the early innings. Because the application is pending, because the public participation process will start up again in the second half of this year, because the legislature is in session, because the BRA will listen to you, they may not like it very much, there's no guarantee that they're going to do what you want them to do, but they will listen to you. So now is the opportunity to make your position known, to try to have an influence over the process. There is definitely an opportunity for y'all to influence the process, but it needs to start happening, or I should say, it already has started happening, I commend everybody for the work they're doing already, Joe, his group, the city of Grandberry, and others. But it really is just the beginning of the process. I read the op-ed piece in today's Orange County News that the BRA board member wrote, I'm sorry that I've forgotten his name. And one of the questions he was responding to was whether the BRA board is answerable or accountable to anybody. And I actually agree, I didn't agree with a lot of what he said in his op-ed piece, frankly, but I do agree with what he said, the BRA board members are answerable or accountable to the legislature, to you all, their customers, the city of Grandberry, and every other municipality and county up and down the basin, and all the people who live in this basin. And so they will listen to what you say, again, whether they'll do what you want them to do, the way you want them to do it, that might take a little more leverage, and that's frankly one of the things that I'm working on, we are, we are all working on. Let me make something clear from the city of Grandberry's position, I speak for the council members and the city manager, McKethan, on this, that the city of Grandberry would frankly prefer to get this worked out with the BRA in cooperation. And, you know, the bottom-line issue, of course, is lake levels in Lake Grandberry. We have not met with the BRA formally, we will be doing that, but I can tell you this evening that we've reached out to representatives from the BRA, and we're told that they are not that interested in talking about that right now, or don't believe they can necessarily do what we want them to do right now. So we're working on all of that. So again, what can you do? You can participate in the legislative process, in the regulatory process, you can make your views known to the BRA general manager and his board. You can participate in the next hearing that's coming up later this year, if you choose to. That's a more complicated process, and we can talk about that another time perhaps, but that's really a more, you know, formal, legal process. But you'll be hearing more about that probably later this summer. You can convince your local governments to participate, you can convince your local businesses to participate. Let me stop there and make a comment, it is public information, I'm not divulging anything that's out of school. The BRA, again, filed their original permit application back in 2004. There were a lot of entities, particularly municipalities up and down this basin, who filed a protest, became a party to the contested case hearing at that time, or at least said they were going to, and would have. I, for example, at that time, represented the city of Waco. And the BRA very, I think wisely, and systematically worked out a settlement with, I think, every single one of those municipalities. I know they've worked it out with Waco, because I helped them do it. And they've also done that with other entities. For example, they've settled their differences with Lumine, who of course, you all know who Lumine is. And I'm not exactly sure what that settlement involves, except I do know that Lumine has agreed not to oppose any of the permits that the BRA is seeking. Basically, in that way, has entered into a partnership with the BRA on that permit. The owners and operators of the power plant? The nuclear plant? Sorry, Comanche Peak. And Lumine, as I understand, the settlement agreement has something to gain from BRA getting more, getting the permit that they need, perhaps more water. So that's really it, I'm going to sit down and let Wayne McKethan come up here, but I will be happy to come back up and answer any questions that GBS might have.
Hello? Well, I appreciate everybody coming tonight. First of all, what I wanted to say, just to start from, you know, they asked me to speak tonight and talk about economic impact, and also update on some of the things that are going on and in process. I'm happy to be here. I just wanted to let you know, though, that I have never seen a group of elected officials, Senator Burdwell, Representative Jim Kepfer, your city council, your county representatives, everybody has worked together to try and come to some solution for this problem. It's been amazing, and I've been really proud of the elected officials here tonight. I want to thank Lake Grandberry Waterfront Owners Association, we've worked with them, they're working very hard to help you and help the lake issue that's impacting you. I've been asked, you know, why is the city involved with this? There's a tremendous, the biggest financial risk we have right now is the lake and the lake impact, there's no doubt about it. We, and you'll see in the presentation tonight, that we believe that we should be proactive. I think there was something in an article that we got the sales tax, we got abhorrent values. Well, that's because we're proactive, and we do things before they happen. We don't wait until everything goes down and then act. We're acting now, okay? And that's why we're here tonight. So we need to work to solve that the abhorrent values do not drop, we'll talk about that in a minute, and that the businesses, okay, that could be impacted, the lake-related businesses, and the people that come down here on weekends and summers continue to come, because that's where the economic activity is generated, the sales tax. So why is the city involved with this? It is that it is very important, it's very important to taxpayers, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. Many are very, and many are very familiar with the presentation that I've done before, and that's not why we're here tonight. But we'll go through it real quickly for those who haven't. But we'll go through it real quickly for those who haven't seen it, and it's about economic and population impacts. And I had told people before, I get a lot of input from people that are very concerned about what's happening to them, and so, as I was dealing with these people, I was amazed at the emotion, and also at the, at the impact that's having on their lives, and so I was trying to figure out why Lake Grandberry was being impacted so severely, so we tried to quantify it. And quantifying that, you can see that Lake Grandberry has developed a lot more abhorrent value around the lake and within the county, and most of our abhorrent is found around the lake. And we have $5.2 million of abhorrent value around the lake, it's a very small lake, it's only 128,000 acre feet. Now, an acre foot is 326,000 gallons. So, there's about 40 million, almost $41 million of impact, every time they release a thousand acre feet, they impact on Lake Grandberry about $41 million of valuation. And you're going to see some of that in some pictures tonight that we're going to show you, which is what hap, what is happening today. On Lake Whitney and Possum Kingdom Lake, in fact, their valuations are much smaller, but they're on much larger lakes, okay? So when they get a thousand acre feet released, they only impact $2 million of valuation on Lake Whitney, and 4.6 million on Possum Kingdom. So there's 18 times more pain incurred per, you know, per lake, in terms, per thousand acres, whenever you release a thousand acre feet. So that's pretty much explains why we are concerned you're about to release, and somewhat more concerned than some of the other lakes. You get the same, you get the same impact with population, more people live around Lake Grandberry than Lake Whitney and Possum Kingdom. And when you apply it to the size of the lakes, any particular release or loring of a lake impacts more people, 12 times more people than Lake Whitney, and about eight times more people than Possum Kingdom. So if I was going to actually try and mismanage a lake, I think what I would do is take the most water out of the smallest lake with the highest economic value and the largest Here's a graphic analysis of that, and you can see, PK, the G, the GB is Grandberry and the WH is Whitney. You can see the relationship of the lakes. They are definitely larger lakes, and Grandberry is a smaller. And here's the analysis of the contract sold acre feet used in 2011, and that number four is all the water being taken out of Lake Grandberry. So, we have a problem. I mean, you know, this was supposed to be a plan, okay? And, you know, I wasn't planning for many years, my, my history is to, I was a corporate executive with, with banking, and if I'd presented a plan like that, I wouldn't have had a child very long, okay? You don't just present the problem, you present the solution, okay? And that's what we need here, is we need the net impact to the lake, not the impact to the lake. So we're a little bit concerned, they came out with a 1.75 ratio to 1, we don't think that's enough. In fact, what we've seen in the recent history has proven it's not enough. And so we're going to talk about that tonight. That was the quick presentation, going back through one we did earlier. And when I say that that 1.75 is in fact not adequate, we're seeing some results of that, okay? And it's just a static ratio, it's, we're sorry, we don't care, we're just going to give you a static ratio, no matter what happens. Well, what I'm going to show you tonight is the status of the lake from some of your neighbors. I, I talk to neighbors, I get pictures from the neighbors, a lot of you don't know what's actually going on on parts of the lake, primarily the northern end of the lake. We have impact here in the middle as well. But let's just look at what, and this is what's really amazing, you get these op-ed comments about, "Don't worry about it, it's going to be okay, we don't, you know, it'll rain and it'll all be over." As you saw in those, in those graphs, okay, it's happening over and over again. And so if that continues, that is not going to help these people, as well as yourself, in what's going to happen to the valuation of your property, okay? Because people are simply not going to walk to buy some of the impacts to your neighbors that's happening now, okay? These pictures were taken in December, whenever it was supposed to be a good time for the lake to fill up. And this is not unusual, in the northern, in the northern end of the lake right now, you see a lot of these types of things happening at our lake in the month of December. It's worse now, okay, this is three months ago, okay, it's lower now. And as we said, they're projecting it will get even worse. Now, I'm not here to show you, we've seen, we've seen pictures of what it should, what we want it to look like, and what it has looked like in the past, but if you're going to talk about economic impact and not just sort of brush over it, you've got to understand what's very possible for a lot of properties around the lake. Now, anyone says that that is not going to have an impact on your valuations, isn't paying attention, okay? And that's what, this is off of Highway 51, everyone knows that, that's what's happening to the lake now. These are amazing pictures of what's happening to your neighbors, and so we've got to talk about it, because we're all in this together. Now, this is what's happened because of the ratio that has been set, okay? The basic capabilities, though, B R A would like to tell you that they can't really control, it's a drought, okay? We can't do anything about that. Well, let's look at that. What they've chosen to do, in terms of their ratio, is that, right now, the basin, well, this was 312, the basin was right at 70% full. What they're doing is, Grandberry, Possum Kingdom and Whitney are all about the same ratio, as you see. Squaw Creek, which we'll talk about in a minute, is of course full. And so they're saying, gee, there's nothing we can do, we just have to spread it out and not do anything. Well, let's talk about the Lower Colorado River Basin, okay? It is at 30% full. Their situation is much more dire there, and this was as of March 12. Most of the lakes go from 20, 30% full, but the lakes around Austin, Ence, LBJ, they're all 94, 92, 97, okay? Now, some of those have hydro plants on them, but Town Lake, if you're aware of it, is inside the Austin group, and it doesn't have a hydro plant, I mean, it's simply an agreement, and the county of Mary's had a lot to do with that. It's sitting at 95% because they agreed to do it. So let's not talk about, you know, we can't do it. In fact, the, I think we're going to find, and even in Yom Peh today, they're getting the lower, lower level gates set up, and we'll see what they can do to, to basically mimic a hydroelectric plant, if they're willing to. So I, so there's no reason to talk about, gee, we just can't make an exception for Lake Grandberry. I just wanted to point that out. Another thing that we want to really talk about is the economic impact. Now, we, when we went down, the abhorrent value around the lake would be devastating to all Hood County political and educational entities. It would be felt by residents, both waterfront as well as non-waterfront. And you ask, well, how does that happen? It happens by valuations dropping, when you see those kinds of things happening to more people around the lake. And when those valuations drop, the tax revenues drop, and those valuations that were paying for taxes are no longer paying for those taxes. We in fact probably estimated, get about 30% more valuation for our house on the lake versus not on the lake. And so what we're going to be doing in the near future is that we're going to be, and I was, I'm part of that committee, and the, and Lake Grandberry Waterfront Owners Association has in fact set up a committee to do an economic impact study, okay, that says, what is going to happen if our property values continue, our, our base of water level continues to drop? One of my degrees is a master's degree in economics, and I've done a lot of impact studies, so I know in fact what we're expecting that impact to show us. It's basically going to show us the waterfront abhorrent values, what will happen to them, I'm pretty much sure they're going to say they're going to drop. Waterfront abhorrent taxes will drop, and when that happens, your overall abhorrent tax rate will go up. Take it from someone who works with a lot of tax rates, as city manager, it's going to be hard for all of the entities to re, to absorb, we'll absorb some of it, but not a good part of it. So that tax rate would have to go up, if, if those valuations are no longer there. And it's sort of ironic that in fact, the waterfront owners' taxes will go down, and the non-waterfront owners will go up, because you can't pass a tax rate that just applies to certain areas of your en, of your area. So what you're going to see is the non-waterfront abhorrent taxes going up, you're going to see lake-related businesses, and I get a lot of calls from lake-related businesses, and they are having some trouble. You can't get your boats in, you can't, and if people can't do that, they're not coming down from the metroplex and spending their money. The sales tax from the lake-related businesses will go down, jobs from the lake-related businesses will go down, jobs will go down, and indirect jobs from loss of lake-related businesses will go down. And that's all the people that service the folks that come to our city on the weekends and summers to enjoy our lake. And the indirect impact of that is that jobs that, businesses that just service people for non-lake-related activity will also go down, restaurants, hotels, those kind of things. So I think that economic study will be very important, we need to present that as part of, I was, I was talking to Ken, he was very happy that we were going to present that and, and actually fund it and get it done. And both the county and Lake Grandberry Waterfront Association has agreed to raise money for that. The city has already, of course, hired the lawyers, hydrologists, those kind of things, we're pitching it as well, and hopefully we can come up with a solution. But this will be an important part of the, of the picture. One thing I wanted to also address is, we have as a card to play that no one else has, is in fact, we have the card to play that we have a nuclear plant that takes water from our lake. Now, if we can solve that issue, and if there is, and of course, there is an issue, but if, if we are able to solve that issue as part, it solves the economic impact as well as the issue that we've raised, as you've seen in the paper. It is an issue that we're going to address, the city council's going to address on this agenda on Tuesday night. The issue addressed is the relationship of Comanche Peak Nuclear Plant and the Lake Grandberry community, because for almost 40 years, as you saw, the two coexisted in relative harmony due to the hydroelectric plant operating at Possum Kingdom Lake, creating water flow that resulted in a lake that had a relative constant level of water. As we saw, B R A management decided that the hydroelectric plant would not with cease operation and controversy and conflict having ensued, there's no doubt about that. B R A has always promoted the fact that Lake Grandberry is instructed to support the nuclear plant. I heard that when I came, I got here in 2005, and I'd heard it. People who've lived on the lake for 30 years have heard it, okay, that the lake was built to support the nuclear plant. And in fact, that is true. The, the lake does support the nuclear plant. Recently, we recen, recently, we had addressed with Luminant the fact that we felt that we could go in partnership with them and have a solution that gave them additional water support, as well as solve our economic problem. They were not interested at the time, and as you heard Ken say just a few minutes ago, they have signed an agreement with B R A not to oppose. Now, we received a letter, I did, as well as one that went to the paper, from Rafael Flores, he is a nuclear, he is a nuclear officer, chief nuclear officer there at the plant. Now, we respect Rafael, he's got a tough job, there's no doubt about that, and when he talks nuclear, everybody listens, okay? He deserves our respect, and he's, and he's a, he's a nice person, he lives here within the community. This letter, however, details and reflects positions on emergency preparedness, management philosophy, and some financial legal responsibility. Now, these type of issues, when you get into those issues, the non-nuclear issues, that's sort of on our turf now, you know? We basically handle emergency preparedness as well. In fact, the city regularly, along with the county and the school district and, and Department of Transportation in terms of state troopers, we're required regularly to hold five to seven-hour drills on specific issues that are, you know, that'll train us on specific issues happening at the plant. So in our mind, we've earned the right to raise the question on safety, because we do everything we can to make sure we're prepared and ready to move in case there's an issue. So if in fact we have a disagreement with it, we're, we're certainly step up and make that disagreement. Whenever he's, in the, in the letter, whenever he points out that he doesn't need any more water from Lake Grandberry, we think that's a, you know, an unusual, unusual comment from, from an entity that basically is contracted with the B R A for 40,000 acre feet. Now, 40,000 acre feet is 13 billion gallons per year taken out of Lake Grandberry, okay? That averages to 36 million gallons per day on average. Now, they'll tell you, gee, I didn't take all of it, but, okay, so you took 25 million gallons per day. That's a lot of water, okay? And so we're a little concerned that, that, you know, that we need that water to remain in Lake Grandberry. What we have seen in the past, and in his letter, getting back to the letter, paraphrasing the comments from Ralph Al, he says that he has thought of all possible emergency situations, and that everyone should, you know, be aware that the nuclear plant does not need water from Lake Grandberry in an emergency. This comes right off Google, so it's not a real big secret, but you can see he's talking about Squaw Creek Reservoir. You see the plant, you see the dam next to it, very near vicinity. Emergency planning, the major reasons he comes to that conclusion existence of Squaw Creek Reservoir and water-based systems. Now, we're emergency preparedness, from an emergency perspective, emergency preparedness perspective, it seems a little limped in scope and naive to say that, in fact, he can always just rely on, on Squaw Creek Reservoir. The scenarios that we have always had to look at was all the possible scenarios, and when you look at emergency preparedness, and, and the weakness that it incurs in emergency preparedness is that you don't look at simultaneous and coordinated events. We perceive that in fact, in this time of terrorism and earthquakes in central Texas, that it is possible to have coordinated or simultaneous events that might both compromise the plant and the reservoir. And you can think of those as easy as I can, I think my 10-year-old grand, granddaughter did. And you can think of those as easy as I can, I think my 10-year-old granddaughter did. But as you can see, the closeness of those two, any good plan assumes that that can happen. Now, we all saw, it should also, any good plan should also take into consideration anything that's possible. The definition of possible now, we have seen, and that is to take out two 90-story buildings in the middle of the day in the middle of Manhattan Island. Now, does that mean that possibly having a compromised situation in Grandberry, Texas in the middle of the night? Yeah, I think that's probably possible. So you need to think about possibilities that could take out Squaw Creek Reservoir as well. And that would demand that you have Lake Grandberry water, and that the best way to, instead of trying to think of all the possibilities, probably the best approach are what should have been the approach that was taken by Luminant, is that we cannot think of all the scenarios that could possibly happen. But what we're going to do is that we're going to put in place, at the initial intake for water for the nuclear plant in Lake Grandberry, the maximum amount available, so that under any situation that occurs, we have done all we can do. That's really what we're asking, okay? If in fact they were to do that, and BRA was to do that, then we as a group, we as a community, should step up and say, you know what? They're doing everything they can do, and we'll all coexist together and take the risk together. And so that's what we're going to ask them to do, and we think that's fair. What, and I appreciate Mickey Parsons pointing this out, I guess I'm living right or something, but there was an article, March 11th, in the March 11 Fort Worth Star Telegram, and the U.S. nuclear plant is safer than ever, U.S. nuclear plants are safer than ever, agency chairwoman, and her name is Allison McFarlane. It was an interview with her, and I agree, they're making good progress, okay, since 9/11. But to read the article, you have to be a little bit concerned. They did quote a watch group, union of concerned citizens, this issue to the SCAN report, nearly one in six U.S. nuclear reactors experienced safety breaches last year in Park because of weak oversight. 14 serious accidents ranging from broken or repaired safety equipment, the same perhaps safety equipment that was mentioned, some in the reason why of redundant safety issues. Over the past three years, four in the 104 U.S. reactors experienced one or more serious safety-related incidents. All that's being brought out that they're addressing, and I think they are addressing those things. But what was in this article that led us to be very, are very interested in going and talking to the NRC, it was that new rules imposed by the commission require the plants must also improve protection of safety equipment installed after 9/11, and make sure they can handle damage to multiple reactors at the same time. Wow. Great minds think alike. That's exactly the coordinated and simultaneous events that we're talking about. So perhaps the people in Washington are thinking along those same lines, and so there's an agenda item at the city council to go talk to these people and see if in fact they will agree with the issues that we're raising. And so that's what we're going to do. Now, one other thing that was surprising, I guess, from a person who's been in management all his life, and a person who, and from our council members, who are very interested in proactive handling of issues, whenever, let's go back. Under the Luminant letter, it was surprising to say that our, this letter said, you know what, if the water gets too low, we're just going to shut down the plant. That is amazing, really? You are not going to get off your duff and get some permanent water put in place in Lake Grandberry so that issue goes away, and therefore taking proactive action to make sure that you never have to shut down the plant? I can't imagine that not to be true. Why wouldn't you go out and solve that problem in opposed to making that your long-term plan of just shutting down the plant? That is a very bureaucratic and a very reactive-type proposal or plan, and why that is acceptable? You know, I spend most of my time in banking, and I can't imagine telling my investors, you know what, if deposits get a little low, I'm not going to go to the discount window, I'm not going to the open market to make a permanent plan as to how to handle that, I'm just going to shut down the bank, okay? How can that be a plan? So once again, what we're asking them, and that's what I like about Grandberry, there are executives here that have retired that spent their whole life creating plans and how to keep organizations going. There's entrepreneurs out there, and I know I've talked to them, who kick and scratch and squeeze and do whatever they can to keep their business going, and then they hear something like, and yawn, if it just gets too low, we'll just shut down the plant. That is a bureaucratic response that is unacceptable. And the reason that we're not going to the local, as they mentioned, NRC's already approved their plan, so the local guy probably already has too. So when you hear someone give that as an example of what they're going to do, you know they're bureaucratic. So we want at least, we see possibilities that perhaps the commission is actually interested in dealing with some of these issues of simultaneous planning, and so we're going to go and talk about that. Now, any good presentation tells whoever you're trying to get across a point to what you want, okay? Well, what do we want, okay? We'd like the BRA to know to reestablish the release ratio between Possum Kingdom Lake and Lake Grandberry to 5.0 rather than 1.75. Our hydrologist tells us that that's about the ratio that in fact was in place, somewhere between 4 and 5 whenever they shut it down. So we want that back, as you heard from Joe Williams. If that's not something they want to do, then just give us 50,000 acre feet as an adjustment, okay? And then we'll take the risk from there. That's a lot of water, but it's about when you get 60% full, we'd see an impact. So every time as the lake drops, you adjust it up to 50,000 acre feet, and we'll be happy. We'll take the risk from there. From Luminant, modify the nuclear plant emergency preparedness plan to address coordinated and simultaneous events, including Lake Grandberry and their plant. They need a second source of water to make sure that they can meet, it's our opinion, obviously not Lumin's opinion, that they need Lake Grandberry as a second source of water, and become more proactive in their management philosophy rather than their current reactive bureaucratic approach. We are ready to work with Luminant, we are ready to work with BRA. Now, what you heard tonight, Luminant's already signed an agreement that they're not going to fight it. We think they should rethink that, and BRA should too. So we are acting with good intent, and we're going to go find as much solution as we can find. But be aware and know that your county commissioners, your city council, your representatives, your senators, all working hard. We appreciate your support, and thanks for coming out tonight. Thank you.
... suit back to the rental, and we'll hurry this up. Greetings from Austin, talking for, and I guess you all know by now Tori Riegus, who is in our Grandberry office here, so certainly use her and keep up very, Senator Burwell and our office has simultaneously filed House Bill 2362, Senate Bill 1092, if you want to be watching that on your, is House Bill 2362, and Senate Bill 1092 for the audit of the Brazos River Authority, and that is a precursor to a sunset of the Brazos River Authority. And what it is, is for all river authorities. We have not just singled out BRA. This is something that we are looking at all river authorities to do. So be following that, and also we have filed House Bill 2363 and Senate Bill 1091 relating the reimbursement of dock fees. So that is something that is ongoing, and we will have the hearings probably coming up in the next week or two. One thing that is, another large, huge thing that's going on, is that we passed House Bill 4 out of committee last Thursday, which is the funding of the statewide water plan. We've had a water plan since 1997, and we have never funded it, and so this year, with the drought, with the situation going on statewide, the only good thing about this drought, if there is a good thing, but the only good thing is that it is statewide, and everybody's felt the pain, everybody's felt the concern, and the issues of water hauling and all that kind of thing. So anyway, that is going on, that has been filed, it's going to be a $23 billion project for the state of Texas, and something I'm really thankful for, that we finally have all the stars aligned, and that that will be going ahead. It's not just digging new holes in the ground, it's going out and finding new sources of water, whether it's brackish, whether it's seawater, reverse osmosis, all the technical stuff out there right now, that we can bring in new sources of water to help alleviate the pressure of the rivers supplying water. Now, one thing that is going to go on, matter of fact, we're going to hear this bill in Natural Resources on Tuesday, and that is the idea of a water master for the Brazos River Authority. And what that is, is TCQ would set up a water master division, probably five to six people that would be then the goal between TCQ and water rights holders of this particular river basin, and it'd be their job to work the river every day. And I, that is a new concept, there are two river authorities right now in the state of Texas that have water masters, the Rio Grande, of course, with our situation with Mexico, we have a water master there, and a river authority, I've been trying to think of the name all night, but it's around San Angelo, is it Pecos River Authority, I believe, has a water master today. So there's two river authorities that have water masters at the present. And, you know, it's one of these situations where I don't know, Tori can tell you, probably the BRA is going to ban my existence for a long, long time, not just this issue, but other issues that we're, and trying to work with them up and down this basin. And I don't know, it's not, believe it or not, it's not just you guys that have a problem with the BRA, it's really just about anybody else, mere mortal, that has tried to work with the BRA on any issue for that matter, up and down this system. So the trust factor, the workability that BRA needs to have to work with folks like you or associations like you is gone, and I don't know that it can be repaired. I really don't. I know probably there'd be an effort to do that, but I really feel that so much time has passed and issues have been treated the way they have, I don't know that can ever be repaired. So without that type of communication, I think we're wasting our time thinking that we're ever going to get past a situation like this, whether it's the lake or some other issue that may come up. So I'm really thinking, and we're going to hear the bill on Tuesday, I have not made up my mind, and I don't think that the Senate, I don't know that, is it, I think it's a House bill that will be going to the Senate, so Brian will have to look at this too. But it's one of these kind of things that maybe its time is coming. Now, I don't know who in their right mind would want to be a water master, to be honest with you. I mean, that's going to be a tough job in itself. However, it can be done, we're doing it now, and the thing that I really have come to like about it is that, as Wayne was saying, it's not a reaction to a problem, it's not a, the emergency's there and now we've got to do something, like TCQ has to do, and they don't have manpower to deal with the issues like this of the drought that we have. So it may be, again, if this group is working the system every day, they know the water, they know the issue, you know, they know the levels, they know the availabilities, and that we can work this and have communication with the lake owners, with Possum Kingdom, with Lake, you know, up and down the system. Quite possibly, it could be, you know, something to look at and something that maybe is a move that we should make. So that's, that is in the offing, and that's going to be, like I say, that's going to be heard on Tuesday, so we'll be in communication, Joe will be, I don't know if anybody can come down and listen to the testimony, which would be, I think, very good if you can. But if not, we will certainly be getting back to Joe and, you know, what the testimony was and what everybody thinks. So that's something that's going on also right now. So it's, I haven't read, I just was given your paper, I haven't read the op-ed or whatever, but it is, it is a situation that I think has really gone, the way the BRA has handled their business on the public forums and just no bedside manner, no caring of anybody else's issues or whatever, it's their deal, and it's their lake, and it's their water, and black and white. I'm sorry, as I said in a gathering, maybe what, three years ago, I guess, when they got the first meeting, if the BRA didn't want to hear from you guys, then they should have never allowed you to build your house or your commercial establishment or be involved around the lake as you are. So they did, and now they got to listen to you, and we're going to make sure, Brian's office, our office is going to make sure your voice is heard, kept on hearing, kept on being heard, look forward to working with you, Ken. I don't know, I'm not a hydrologist, I do like water, but I'm not a hydrologist, but I look forward to really filling in some voids and issues that I have, that I don't know really what we should do or what we should do, because you always hate to say something that you're going to regret, and I know politicians are like that a lot, anyway. But Ken, I hope you can sort of help me anyway, fill in the voids and know how to deal with this in a manageable term, in a workable situation, because I know you are very successful, and look forward to working with you in that regard. So God bless you guys, I'll hang around for a little bit when this is over with y'all, and I just think you visit the kind of things we've got to have, we've got to do, and God bless you, God bless Texas, and continue to pray for rain. Thank you.
We're going to have questions here, we'll take questions in just a minute. Before we do, on your program there, on the third page, we had it up here a little while ago, what you may be able to do, watch your emails will tell you, this is a little bit longer process, but on the back page especially, on the back bottom, if you're not a member and want to become a member, you're not sure you're a member, we have it on there where you put your email address and the name outside of the man table back here, drop it in the box, or one of the couple boxes there, and we'll contact you, and we'll get you caught up. The other thing is, of course, we're also raising funds for the impact study, there's also a box for that, for our fundraiser, we're always taking donations for that. So anyway, we're going to go with the questions. What I want to do is, Ken and Wayne, anybody has questions, Ken, Wayne, Jim Kepner, Jim Kepner will be here, so let's see if we can get the mics around, we're trying to get them working.
They're working.
They're working?
Yep.
Okay. Let's, we're taking mics around, any questions that you have? Let's start right here, right up front.
Okay.
Thank you to BRA and everything else, and I've been around, I've been around business for a while. What are they doing for us, the people, today?
Well, they supply electricity and they supply some jobs, okay? But they don't...
But they don't supply any tax base because they're not in the county or the city, and so they don't supply any sales tax, they don't supply any real tax money to the city of Granbury or the county, to answer your question. Yes?
Here, wait, wait.
What is B.R.A. gonna do with the water they requested? Everybody's wondering thousand acre feet?
We wish we knew, right?
So.
Okay, um, I know Ken can answer this, they don't tell us, I mean, honestly, they don't tell us. They don't even really know where it's, it's coming from. I can tell you from the B.R.A. home meetings, town hall, back in the summer in Temple, I went to that meeting, uh, they said that they were gonna take, they needed a hundred and twenty thousand acre feet of usable water by two thousand twenty-five, this is what is in demand, and out of that one twenty, they needed about seventy or eighty thousand acre feet out of Possum Kingdom. There is a rhyme and a reason, they're not gonna admit to this, they're gonna, they're gonna do their audits and say, there's a rhyme and a reason as to why they shut the plant down, is to hold the water back. They wanna, they wanna hold the water back so they can capture the water up, to the fog, to the lake that's located in the upper river basin, it's the best control of the whole water system. So, but where exactly it will go, they're not telling us. We know about Commission Peak, if they had reactors free before, that's all we know. And just so you get a feel for the kinda money we're talking about, the city of Granbury owns ten thousand acre feet, and for that, we pay B.R.A. over six hundred thousand dollars a year. Now, if they're asking for four hundred thousand acre feet, there you go, they, think of the money that's basically gonna come into them, it's gonna be a tremendous amount of money, so.
Go over here.
Ken Ramirez.
Okay, for Ken?
Isn't there some regulation or law that makes this uh, public information about the obligations that they have with water and, and financial?
About, about alterations to their permit?
No, well, the current obligations as well as the new, that we opened on.
You mean, you mean what, what they're gonna do with the water?
Yeah, yeah.
Well.
The public information?
Uh, a lot of, much of what B.R.A. does is public information, yes, but the four hundred thousand acre feet, they're gonna supply that water for some use, uh, they're gonna supply it to municipalities for purchase, to industry for purchase, for agricultural needs, for environmental flow needs, you know, you need to have a certain amount of water in the river, make sure it's still a river. Uh, you know, they've done their studies and made their projections about how much water's gonna be needed in the basin. But specifically what they intend to do with all four hundred thousand acre feet of water, no, that's not, that information's not available to my knowledge.
There's no part of the plan?
I'm sorry?
There's no part of the plan?
No. The part of the plan is to get the water, the second part of the plan is, frankly, we'll tell you what we're gonna do with it later. That was one of the reasons that the permit application was not granted back in twenty-eleven, because there wasn't enough specific detail in the permit application.
Questions, any other questions? Okay, all right, somebody else grab a mic. Okay, just a minute, I'll try and get to everybody.
I'm one that lived on the canal, and when you get three and a half feet out of this deadened lake in the back, and I didn't.
Wayne?
Actually, I think I have a couple of things to, to say. First, I really liked your presentation on the economics, um, I think that's powerful, I'm a lobbyist myself. One of the things that I really recommend that you do is look for the environmental people and, and see if you can't wrap them in, it would be great if we had an endangered species that was really gonna be hurt by this. Um, I, I think I look for something like that.
Anybody have any antitherpes?
But, but I, but I think environmentalists could help here, um, I, I really think that that would, that that would be something that you could, or better said, we could, could look for as an ally. Uh, the, the other thing that, that I, I was, I think about, I, I lost my train of thought, but it was what you were, you guys were talking about a little bit earlier, um, lost my train of thought, but I think the environmental impact, um, should, you should at least explore. I do have a question though, and you, you did address this a little bit earlier, what is the B.R.A.'s motivation? I mean, I understand that they say we need this for the future or we want it, but, but is it, if, if it's financial, that's something I think that you just have to understand about the B.R.A. to craft arguments to, um, I guess argue with them.
Ken, can you answer that question? And I think, I could try to answer, but I think if it, the question is, is what is the?
Their, what is their capacity? If we're seventy-four, our capacity, they're much larger like the earth.
Yes, their, their capacity is about five hundred and forty thousand acre feet, we're one twenty-nine, you know?
So.
So about four times.
So we're, we're seventy-four percent capacity, what are they?
Well, they're trying to hold them about this same capacity, look like if you saw that, that, uh, that slide where I showed you Granbury and, and Possum Kingdom and Whitney, they're trying to keep those percentages pretty close, look like. Right.
Well, that, so getting back to my question then is, what they're doing is letting a lot more water out here, and right behind my house, I have fish killed like you won't believe, and E. coli is really getting really bad up and down through there, this due to tests just recently.
Right.
So what are we doing about, what are we doing about the economic, I mean, the, the health hazard?
Right.
That's going on up and down through here, what's, what's our?
Yeah, we talked, we talked about environmental, which would include Golden Algeans and E. coli, and to be honest, uh, that's for another town hall, this, this will be taken up and it will be within the next couple of months. So, uh, we've been talking about economic impact tonight, uh, our next part is about environmental, and we're, we're, we are researching that like hell, that's for me, and it is an important issue. JD, do you have another one?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
It's about the money.
Okay, well.
Okay, so, uh, we've talked a lot about the economic impact and the money that's going into the B.R.A., so question is, and to the group in general, uh, exactly where is that money ultimately going? I'm sure they're gonna claim that some amount of money is needed to support the system, uh, but the dollars we're talking about is probably far greater than what would be needed to, to, you know, sustain or maintain the entire basin.
Again, I don't know, that's a question the B.R.A. needs to answer, but let me try to be positive for a moment. Uh, four hundred thousand acre feet generates a lot of money, and it will continue to generate even more because money, the cost of money's not gonna go down. Pipelines, reservoirs, desalination plants, reuse plants, you name it, uh, and so one, one positive way to look at this is maybe that water could, I mean, that money could be used to help generate building more of those, that infrastructure that helps support water in the state of Texas.
Also, I'd like to take that a step further out there, the B.R.A., they, they will say that they use some of the revenue for managing the water, you know, things like that, which is understandable, but they also are using it to find future projects, uh, to sell water. They operate just like a private business, you use parts of secrets, but, but they have a monopoly, so, you know, it's, and they have a good business over there if they wanna keep it, and they've got, they're powerful, they got a lot of good people in there working, and so, uh, you know, it's, it's a hard road, but, uh, we have all of you, so if it works out great.
Joe?
Yes?
I have a link here with your question.
On the bill we get annually for dock fees, it's just fifty bucks, but, and it does say that they don't have to give us lake, lake level, but we have been able to use our dock pretty much for two years. What is the penalty or what would happen to me if I don't send in their fifty bucks?
Boy, uh, I, I can, I've heard the stories about that, basically what I have been told is that they said that if you do not pay for the docks, that they will actually send some type of notice that actually, you have to take the dock down, and then if you don't agree to take the dock down, then they're gonna actually have some type of, but somebody knocking at your door, force you to take the dock down, that's what they do.
Well, you know, you can't take your dock down when you can't get a twenty-three foot cabin cruiser out.
I agree, well, yeah, I agree, and, and.
Are you the other person, I need to remove my bow?
Yeah, well, you don't have to be all right yet, so I wish I could help you, and I, I exactly agree, so.
So Mike, if all of us on the lake did not send in our fifty dollars?
Right.
Are they gonna come out and, can they afford to come out and take down all our docks? Will that speak volumes?
Yeah, they, they will not, they will not take the, the dock, um, rebuilding or taking it down themselves, they would actually just request that we do it. And again, this is all about, this is nothing to do, so I would agree, if we could all get together, that'd be maybe a possibility to do that. Any other questions?
Wait, 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 one more.
Okay.
One more, one more for me.
And I see this guy, okay, one, that's it.
My question's probably to Representative Kiefer, maybe State Representative, but.
Okay.
Since I moved here, I often wondered, where does the B.R.A. get authority to have a police agency, a law enforcement agency, acting at their behest?
Okay, I, I didn't hear, where did they get the authority to do what?
Where did they get the authority to set up and operate a law enforcement agency?
Okay, Lake Rangers? Hey, Jim, would you know this? He was asking, what, where did they have the right to, B.R.A. to set up a law enforcement agency on the lake? Do you know?
Lake Rangers.
Yeah, Lake Rangers. I don't think we have an answer to that, hate to say, I have that question, if we can find out, we'll say we find out, send it out. I'm gonna ask this, I got one more question, then we're done.
Representative Kiefer, you have a follow-up to this? I have a follow-up to Lumina's question. In this infamous article in the newspaper, this fellow is a recent reappointed member of the B.R.A. Board of Directors. How is someone reappointed? Is there a salary involved? And, and a follow-up to a follow-up, it says he's accountable to the Texas Legislature, the Texas T.C.E.Q., uh, our system, our customers and Governor of Texas, to name a few? This, these are the governing bodies, and this fellow's been reappointed? How did he become reappointed?
Well, you're, 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 you're a Florida guy, and then I, I forget how many years, four years, and when your turn comes up, if you want to serve, I assume the governor will reappoint you, especially if you're not a area that is, that needs to have the representation.
Well, we do, we do call it, they say there's a salary.
No, I think all the years, they might get traveled, but they don't get salary.
But they have the mint power.
Yeah. Yeah, they do. No, I got, I got, I just, I'm giving the New York Board my ticket.
Right, all right, we're gonna wrap it up here, real quick though, we, what we wanna do, I've been reminded by the county commissioners, if you want to take the next step and help, right to, we left it in the program, write to, up there to email, comment, or mail in and tell them what you think about B.R.A. taking the water, and we need to continue that, we wanna flood the office of T.C.E.Q. to show that concerns are in Lake Granbury. Thank you guys, and I, we're gonna be right here answering questions as well.